Father, we thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you, Lord, for your goodness, your grace and mercy that has brought us here. Lord, we pray that tonight's meeting would be held with honor and respect and we pray that you would give wisdom to those who are leading. And we thank you, Lord, for these great servants to our community. We pray, Lord, that each one of us, no matter our, our status or our position or our responsibility, help us, Lord, to, to sense the weight of our responsibility and to, to live and, and serve faithfully, Lord, for your glory. We give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pleased to be here. Pleased to be here. Of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row please.
Mayor?
Here.
Wendell Walker?
Here.
Jan Earning?
Here.
Stan Moran? Sean Simpson?
Here.
Del Carruthers? Raymond Hutton?
Here.
Jim Ed Ransom?
Here.
And Shane Hamilton?
Here.
Mayor, we do have a meet. Coram.
You had a chance to look over our previous minutes of July fourteenth. Motion from Sean to accept the minute meetings from, uh, July fourteenth.
Second.
Second by Raymond. All in favor to say aye.
Aha.
All opposed. Motion two. And with, uh, public comment, Mr. Terry Totowski.
How y'all doing this evening? Um, I just wanted to raise my concerns again about this leaf and limb program that, uh, I believe we ought to go back to the city running it. We got the equipment for it. It may not be the best equipment in the world, but we already have the equipment to be able to do it ourselves. Uh, now the jails opened back up, so we got free labor. Any like you can't put out, him, those guys out there working on those trucks and picking up leaves and limbs and that's saving ninety thousand dollars a year right there is what we was paying before for, for labor. And I still don't think that you've done a real true study of, uh, your cost analysis and how much savings we're getting out of contracting this out versus city doing it as a city program like it's always been. You know, when I pulled the, the numbers before, nobody could break down exactly what was being spent on leaf and limb equipment versus what was being spent on all gra- all roads and grounds equipment. So, uh, no true breakout. I don't see where it's really a savings than we've seen over the last five months. Well, coming up on five months now that we're not getting the service that we had even when the city had broken equipment. I mean, even with the equipment we got, we've got more than a skid loader and a dump trailer. And that's all the contractor's been providing so far. I know they're on the way out, but can we get somebody else into, for the price that we're even getting that for? That's ten fifty per meter. What's this new guy gonna cost us? You know, I, I think as a city program, plus it keeps, it keeps those guys employed here in the city, keeps the money here in the city. Even with contractor now, that guy lives in, in Carlisle. Why don't we keep it here in the town? Keep, keep people in the city employed. Or using the inmates, you know? I'm sure Chief over there can keep you supplied with people. But, uh, and there's another thing I want to talk about besides leaf and limb. I don't know if you know that, the new law is passed here in Arkansas that like the school board now for their, uh, board meetings, they have to open up public comments to everybody. There's not a timeline on it, nothing like that. You walk in the door, you sign up for public comments. You're able to speak to the board. I don't know why the city council don't do that as well. You know, you put restrictions on people to be able to address you. You put it down here as a privilege versus a right to be able to address your government. But, uh, and then you put restrictions that you gotta have your, if you want to talk about an agenda item, I had to announce that I wanted to talk about it last Tuesday. The agenda wasn't even made public until what day ginger, or, uh, June, Friday, Thursday? So the agenda wasn't even available till Thursday. How was I supposed to know if I wanted to talk about an agenda item by Tuesday of last week? You know, why, why restrict the public on being able to come up here and talk to you guys? Don't make no sense. That's all I got. Anybody got any questions for me?
Thank you, sir.
Alright, y'all have a good one.
Anybody here from the library? Now, uh, budget and finance, our second quarter budget comparisons. Y'all had a chance to look at that. Our number on our restaurants are, uh, hotels not, but we're pretty good on like, a thousand a month on. We're, I guess about the same on the motel part of it. Looking at our average on our three cent, it's a like six thousand, a little over six thousand. So all in all, I, everything looks, looks okay. So, y'all got any questions or?
Motion accepted.
Motion accepted.
Second.
Second quarter. Second by Raymond. All in favor, say aye.
Aha.
All opposed. Motion two. Jim Ed and Raymond second. Discussion regarding salary increases.
You got all of our things?
Uh, some.
That we proposed?
I've been in a mess the last couple of weeks, but, uh.
What was the final consensus of everybody weighing?
Um, now, as far as, I know the police department was fine.
We left it.
Everybody agreed on it and the, uh, which we lost, uh, salary in water and sewer, our main guy quit us.
Yeah.
Uh, but salaries are good there in water and sewer and streets.
We've got somebody that's gonna do that down there.
Well, that's, uh, I was gonna call him tomorrow. Brent Kirkendall, he lives at Furlough, but he's got class four of everything. He's worked in Plasty County, but he took a look at it and I told him the position we were in, that we were out of compliance and I had to, but I told him we was trying to get it back.
Yeah.
You know, and he said he would do it, but the mess it is, he'd want two thousand a month. So, that's up to y'all.
We can do without it, can't we? Can't do without it, can you?
Well, with some of the class fours and April to take care of whatever we need.
I mean, we lost that salary, so that'll make up.
Oh, yeah, it'll be.
The other guy going to school to try to get his, so we all be in pretty good shape.
By December, he'll have his, so. But they said they held the loans, we needed them too, so.
I don't, I don't think we have a choice.
So does that sound alright to y'all?
He's gonna, he's gonna take care of the sewer only and get that up going with the state regulations.
I'll have to get him set up the state showing he's in.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, we, we hire.
Motion Wendell to pay the two thousand a month, Mr. Kirkendall?
I'll second.
Second by Janie. All in favor, say aye.
Aha.
All opposed. Motion two.
Jim Ed Lee?
Is that his name?
Okay.
Okay, now back to the budget.
Alright.
Didn't, did we, what was the consensus with everybody as far as raising all over compared to merit raises?
I think the merit raises will be fine. The department heads would have to make recommendations and.
That was that con- the consensus here?
I think most people's fine with that. It's, you know.
I am. You do that like on the anniversary of their hire?
We'll do it like in the summer every year, just like now.
Okay.
We'll just do it mid-year. Uh, that'll give us time to kind of say where we're at with our money and.
You gotta have them do, kind of like evaluations on it for their merit.
And that's what I, you know, that way they can give a, turn me in a, a sheet showing what their job is and how well they've done and what they'd like to do, so. Yeah, that's alright with everybody, as far as that goes.
So we got starting salaries? You got all those?
Yeah, those are all.
Every level of things.
Part-time people, it's gonna be, you know, around eleven to twelve, thirteen dollars. And, uh, most of all of our, like, street and all, you're looking at fifteen. Now, police department, we didn't, what is y'all's starting salary?
For jailers, it's thirteen.
For a police officer?
For a police officer, you're looking, if they're uncertified, seventeen. And certified, eighteen. Okay, so somewhere in that eighteen mark.
I didn't propose to change anything, Lord.
Thank you so much. The guys will, uh, and ladies will be.
And I think, uh, the ballpark, everybody was fine on. Sorry.
What was the consensus as far as capping?
Well, that's.
That was my biggest concern, was capping.
Well, some people said like, you know, around fifty-five.
Yeah.
For most, you know, department heads. The only thing it would be stuff you had to have like, like Chief of Police and the Water and Sewer would be the only thing that would be.
Their licenses are required and that kind of thing, yeah.
Then you don't have to pay a lot more, you know, depending on what they've got.
Yeah.
You know, you get somebody come in, got class threes and fours all over, I mean, they're not gonna work for just a little, 'cause they got, they can go anywhere in the state.
Everybody will have to get a copy of everything that's going in order for them to work up budgets next year. They're gonna have to know what's, what they're doing.
So we're good on the street, the Water and Sewer, the Police Department. The community center, that, some of these are passed, what people thought the cap ought to be.
Yeah, I know.
So that's, they just be grandfathered in or?
It's just for new ones coming in.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I think, just for the new ones coming in, but as far as what they're expected to cap out at, there's a, at least now there'll be something.
Right. Uh, that's community center. Street department. Water department, good. Police department. District court, I think that was all good, which which we got two part-time. So they're just making like twelve eighty-eight and eleven dollars for that's now. Taking the speed of patrol, they're gonna be paying like sixteen and eleven, eleven and eleven. And parks, I think everybody was good with, uh, parks. Community development's good. And then my office, bad man.
What about our office, Rob?
Oh, I missed it, I guess. I apologize, I was gonna have this together better.
People don't realize how many departments there are.
I know.
They just need to get city police in here.
Well, I guess I missed it. I apologize, fumble fingers, hey, I can't. Been a crazy couple of weeks for me. See my animal control?
Community development.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, it was okay. Cause they're making fifteen fifty. Which Lisa hadn't been here a year.
She was late and, you know.
She's fine for, right, but I'll probably wait till her year. I've seen you in Regina's at sixty-two, eight fifty-four and sixty-two, six oh four.
I wanted to cap that. And I think I wanted to cap it lower than, I know you girls got a huge raise all at one time, I think, but I, I think it's way out of bounds compared to what we should be. And I think it oughta, you know, ca- we need a cap there.
That's what, the majority was around fifty-five.
I think so.
But that wouldn't affect what y'all make now.
We're not gonna take it away from you.
You might get in trouble for that.
No, we're not gonna take it away from you. Only way we could take it away from you is if we ran out of money.
Then we'd all be with that.
Then we, then none of us, none of, nobody would get paid. Nobody would get paid.
So right now, Bond is the only thing, only person in my office that would get anything. So, is that? Everybody okay with all that?
Do we need, do you need to vote?
Yeah, it's on what we talked about.
And make a motion, we go by that.
Motion from Janie to accept the salaries, second, second.
Dale.
By Dale, all in favor, say aye.
Aha.
All opposed. Motion two. Now, police department, Chief Keith Graham.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hope everybody had a good July, going into August with school starting. I know the superdolos probably excited. We're excited to see the kids go back to school as well. Uh, in front of you, you see my monthly reports, numbers. Uh, we did two hundred and thirteen dispatch calls, blanks. Uh, you'll see the numbers of citations issued for last month was a hundred and two. So, that number basically quadrupled or so of what we were last year. Last year in July, we had nineteen.
Ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What, what is the speed limit that you can exceed the speed limit? Um, in other words, if it says fifty?
Fifty.
Before you get a ticket, how fast can you go?
By law, it's fifty.
But, okay, so.
Or whatever the speed limit is, whatever number, that's the speed limit.
You don't have any lead wave whatsoever.
It's officer discretion.
At that point on, from here on.
Oh, I better start watching my graphic.
So, last month to all of July was basically speed month. Basically, we're looking for speeders and stopping speeders, writing contacts, warnings or citations. We had a hundred and two last month. Every ward was, uh, represented on citations last month, so we hit everywhere in the city.
I just saw a lot of the zero to ten miles per hour and I'm thinking, oh, me.
It's officer discretion and the attitude of the violator that we're making contact with. If they have a bad attitude, then we're gonna do our job. And try to go from there. Um, we did, with the jail open, we did serve thirty-five, uh, misdemeanor warrants and five felonies. Right now, we're on track to beat all that this month, so that's our goal. Is there any question on the numbers?
And we're not keep, are we keeping prisoners?
Yes, ma'am, we sure are.
Are we keeping them twenty-four hour holds?
Yeah, it depends. Uh, last month we did, let's see, my first page. We had nine people booked in our jail and they were held in there either for, to bond, which is their right to bond, so if they bond out, the bondsman comes in, pays the twenty dollar fee and accepts the responsibility that inmate to go to court. So tangible money that we get is not up there. We're not gonna see tangible. What we're gonna see is court system is gonna have more people showing up. Court system is gonna have more people showing up to court, more fines being made, so the court's gonna be bringing in more revenue and more money.
We're not open twenty-four hours.
We are twenty-four hours, most days, we're, right now, we're in kind of a, uh, a point where I've got one jailer that's had a broken arm. For the last three months, he hopefully will be released next week, so we're gonna try to transition more to the twenty-four hour, right now, we're noon to midnight.
Basically, they're just there if we have somebody right now, we're trying to find more people.
We have interviews set up for Thursday for, uh, the jailer.
We used to get a report, how many people that was in there, and the, the money that, that was, you know, what we charged for them.
Yeah, Randy used to do that.
I like to see that.
When you're a short-term facility, since the jail closed.
Yeah.
We lost everything.
Well, when are we gonna get it back? When are we gonna get that back?
Finding the money to invest, because now with us not being grandfathered in, with us not being grandfathered in, we have to maintain, go to the facility policies that jail has. So you have to have outdoor rec area, you have to have an outdoor rec area, which we do have an outdoor rec area, but it doesn't meet ADA compliance. So you can't get a wheelchair into the outdoor rec area, so that, all that would have to be torn down and remodeled.
Well, we spend a bunch of money to get, to get nowhere right now, you know.
My question is, what money have we spent on the jail, most of the stuff?
We, y'all know we done it ourselves, but we spend a lot of money on supplies and stuff like that, you know.
Not really, not really, we've been very financially responsible with everything that.
I like to report on that, like to have it.
Well, the report is, for last month, we had five inmates.
Yeah.
Each one of them bonded out, where they were transferred to the court, so if you take that, for example, is, we had. Six warrants, so the court system's now gonna have an individual come in to show up to court and pay fines. One aggravated assault, so instead of them going to hurt anybody out on the, on the road, they're now within the jail, and they got transferred to county. After that, we had a violation protection, so instead of somebody getting violated and hurt, they went to jail, and now they have to deal with the consequences. The second time they violate that, it's a felony automatically.
But they go to court, too, the, we don't really know till they go to court, how much, don't we get a percentage?
We will get us a percentage of each citation, each inmate can find, what that percentage is, it's, it's miniscule, across the board, across the whole state. No police department actually really bases their money off.
They don't get a certain fee per person, per twenty-four hour?
Nope. That's, that's to the court system. The police department does not i- issue fines.
I'm talking about if, like, the county paid you or whatever to hold that twenty-four hour.
If we were a short-term facility.
When are we gonna get to that short term?
We gotta have the money and the remodeling of that place to do it.
We've spent a lot of money, so.
We're not severe, we're actually spending on target less money this year than was spent at this time last year, on everything. We are actually being very responsible for everything that's going on, we just got a ninety thousand dollar grant, which is the next thing of my topic. To be able to provide officers with computers in the cars.
Well, how much remodeling over there needs to be done?
We've done a lot. We've torn down, we've torn down a lot of walls, the whole back area, you couldn't even walk in, so we had to tear all that down, and it's finding. Tearing down's great, but finding places where things need to go, once you get all that stuff tearing down, that you have to keep.
Well, I know this facility's kinda small, like.
It's small, it's, it's built in the city.
We'll have to start a new doorway to get into that recreation area.
Yeah, yeah, that, that fenced area there.
And all this is just a basically open yard where there's some old exercise bikes, which, if you like those, we can, they've been out there for a long time. But, we've gotta, it's not just the rec area, when you do a short-term facility, you have to have a library, you have to have a medical person on standby at all times. All those are costs that you're going to have to incur to be able to move forward, there's a lot of regulations, now if we were, still had our jail open, we wouldn't need, need to meet those regulations.
But since we closed it, it's reopening, yeah.
If you find me a hundred thousand dollars, I guarantee we can get the jail up and running, but you gotta have that money to be able to build the facilities for that. That's why jails are so difficult to build, maintain, and supply. He's just cruising around.
Who's your, who's your partner there?
This is, uh, this is our new partner, this is the first time he's really been out in public, we'll say. He was a animal cruelty case that the city animal shelter, uh, got a hold of. It went through the court system, finally was awarded to the city, so I adopted him out personally. And in turn, we're using him as a comfort dog and emotional support dog, which I plan on speaking with the superintendent about having him go into schools.
It was a trained.
He was a trained service dog for autism, for PTSD, and for a few other little things, which we all have his certification. Right now, we're dealing with a, uh, medical issues, he has heartworms, all of that I'm paying for out of my own pocket, so the city does not have to deal with any of the cost of that, but he's a good boy. He goes home with me every day, he stays with us, he's interacted, we, we had an autistic girl come in to file a report with her mom. He laid next to her, calmed her down, and kept her at peace, and it helped the situation.
It's just amazing.
It is amazing with autism.
Beautiful, yeah.
So, hopefully that answers what the jail questions are.
Yeah, I, I mean, our goal was to get it up and going, and it's still our goal.
And it is. It is, and we helped two people today, and we are on target, right now, we have, uh, just as many arrests, people held in jail this month, and it's the eleventh, that's what we had last month. So every month will get better, you wanted the jail open, I got it open in nine months, from scratch. So, we're getting there, and we're progressing pretty steadily, and actually, probably a little bit faster than what I would figure we would be.
What are you, what are you, what are you figuring, how long?
To get a short-term facility?
Yeah.
Uh, hopefully through the next year, but it's, it's gonna be the money, the money situation, you gotta have revenue, you gotta have income.
If we get a grant, which we're applying for, if we get a grant, we'll get it done a lot faster.
It's all, it's not an overnight thing that we're gonna be able to do, we've got it open, and we are holding people accountable for everyone's actions on the streets.
I just think our city would feel so much better if we had our own police department, working as their own police, as our own police department, so.
And we are, most of the, most of the police departments around Lumoak and around the state of Arkansas have transitioned away from a short-term facility. They have, they do a twenty-four hour, because you can thank the s- the people in Little Rock, for the state, making those regulations on us.
Cause we can hold them, you know, we used to hold for Cabot, Austin Ward, England.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So.
And we're getting there.
I mean, I, I've, I've had a, I've had a parole officer tell me he could put as many, we won't in there, and, I mean, he could get them here, we just got to get it capable of holding.
Yeah, we just gotta make the jail standard.
Yeah, legal, yeah, yeah. Cause he said he puts them in England, he puts them all over the place.
They don't put it, they don't put them in England anymore?
No, they, they took him, they took him out.
There's so many rules and regulations with it, we're doing everything by the book, cause we're not gonna shortcut anything.
I think we're all.
Make the city a, a subject of a lawsuit.
I think we're all working for the same goal, we, we, we take all of us together, we'll get there.
We will get there, hundred percent. Uh, the next thing I have, the only thing I really have, is approval on the state bid for the computers in the cars, everything's on state contract for, uh, to equip our units. The total is a hundred and seven thousand dollars and something, we've got, our grant will cover eighty thousand dollars of that. So we will have to come out eighty, twenty-seven thousand dollars out of what we have budgeted, when I built the budget for the twenty-five year.
Yeah, see, we budgeted for that whole thing, since we got that grant, we got eighty some thousand dollars.
And I put ninety thousand dollars in the budget, so this actually puts us ahead by about fifty-three thousand dollars. So I just need approval to go ahead and order the computers.
A hundred seven five forty-five eighty.
Yes, sir, and eighty of that one.
Motion for Sean to go ahead with the, uh, vote for the grant.
Second.
Huh? Second, who did?
Shane.
Oh, Shane seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. All right, any more questions, guys?
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now Parks and Sportskeeper, Director Jonathan Curry.
How y'all doing, safe doing that? Excited about fall ball coming up, that's gonna be start of September, and we'll go all the way up until November, uh, soccer also. Uh, we'll do fall ball once a week, and then we'll do soccer on Saturdays, uh, just started taking sign-ups, and with school starting, we'll have all the, sorry. The other forms, you know, passed out through the school, cause your superintendent lets do that, so we're, we're, you know, I'm checking the numbers up most I can, I'm hitting, you know, car law up. You know, and in England and Hazen, because they don't offer soccer programs, I'm trying to, you know, get a few from here and there, and, uh, and they also don't offer fall ball. So, I'm trying to venture out a little bit, try to get some, you know, kids that don't have that opportunity to play in their own town. But, uh, I just got a couple quotes here, um, they both have to do with the swing set, handicap swing set over there on Barn Street. Uh, the first one is gonna be for the concrete, the, the, filling the eight holes for the, poles for the comp, for the swing set to be set, it's, uh, around fifteen hundred.
Fifteen fifty.
Fifteen fifty, there you go, thank you. So, I need that, also, uh, the railing, the steel railing from the tree damaged, it did damage all of it, but it got a good portion of it. And that price was running five thousand.
Forty-five thirty.
Forty-five, yeah. So I need those two things, get that back up and.
Where's the railing?
Oh, it, it, the green railing, oh, that goes around the concrete slab where the, no, to keep the.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, on Barn Street, yeah.
Yeah, I've had my grand keep those, yeah.
They gonna put that rubber pad back down.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we accept the, uh, concrete work and the work, uh, as I can discuss.
We do them together.
All right, motion from Shane to do the concrete work and the railing, second, but Dale, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carried.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Uh, now the community center, Director Mike Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry about missing last month, uh, for the center, uh, pretty good month. Uh, we're down on memberships a little bit, but all in all, we're still having a, a pretty good year. Um, I was just talking to, to, uh, Parks guy, uh, Jonathan, and, uh. We need to come to the twenty-first century with our registrations, uh, because we've got, I get most of these people coming to sign up for soccer with me. Uh, so, uh, and he's agreed to kind of work with, and when we redo the budget, uh, we've got to figure out a way where people can sign up online. Uh, instead of them making the trip out to a certain place to sign up, it, it, that's what, it just makes more sense to do that. So, that's something that hopefully we can get taken care of, and get you to take debit cards in the golf field. One big thing that we're planning on in, in October, uh, we're having, uh, we did this several, several years ago, a senior health fair. And, uh, it's real important, cause I fall into that category now, uh, but, uh, what it is, is, uh, we're gonna have vendors come out. In conjunction with, uh, Long, uh, Council on Aging, they're gonna have, uh, uh. They're gonna have a, uh, fair or a Olympic type thing, uh, and so many events that, uh, uh, that they're gonna have, and I. Some real interesting events, uh, let's see, two hundred meter walk, shot put, football throw, uh, ring toss, javelin throw. Spin casting softball throw, uh, majority of what we're gonna do in the, in the, in the field, uh, I'm working with the school on, you know, using the track. Uh, for a short period of time, but I think this is gonna, and we'll have it annually, uh, I think this is gonna, uh, be big for us. Uh, so, uh, it's October the third, it's, uh, I think we're gonna start at eight, eight o'clock and end at like one. Uh, so, we're in the process of, uh, planning that. Me- my member of the month, let's see, member of the month is Thomas. Uh, Thomas works at the school, uh, he's, uh, been a member, uh, for quite a long time. And our siding is a hundred percent, and remember what I've, I've got now, uh, it's all done, and I've had everybody and their sister call about the siding that we've got. So, I need to see what I can do with it, it's, it's, uh, good metal, just that I only need a couple of pieces, and probably twenty, twenty-five more pieces out there. See if I can get that off the premises.
Probably needs to be over in one of these buildings, I hate to, cause it being a special thing, I hate to let it go, but we can, we can put it in one of these big buildings, get it out of y'all's way.
Okay. And that's, uh, pretty much all I have.
While you're up here, I don't ma- I, I haven't had a chance to visit with you about it, I was going to, but the last couple of weeks have been a mess.
Oh, I know, it's been a.
I had been talking about a splash pad, and the majority of people think it'd be better at the community center. And I just want to know what everybody thought, cause I'm gonna try to get a grant, to get that thing put in. What, do you think that would work with y'all, I mean?
Sure, if it'll, if it'll, uh, enhance the community, I'm all for it.
Okay, so, everybody good with that?
I am, yeah.
Surely it can't be no more harder than taking care of a pool.
No, it'll be a lot easier than that, a lot easier.
I'll give us some bids in on that, y'all can look at it.
I think that'd be great, I think, I think the kids here in town wouldn't do all of that.
See if we can give them a little more something to do, run around.
Okay, that's, uh, hopefully we'll have something, that's something I can.
All right, I'll come visit with you, we'll get.
We can put in the budget, uh.
I'll come out there, we'll mark off where you think would be a good place, and get some covers and some seating and stuff, I think it'd be nice.
I do too, I do too.
All right.
Why hadn't you thought about that before?
Huh?
Why hadn't you thought about?
Well, we did, you know.
I wasn't here.
Several years ago.
I don't remember talking about.
Was that after you left? It was our last year or two, and we just.
Must've been sick then.
We never got it.
Well, that and, uh, one other thing, man, along with the splash pad, I think, uh, the city needs to look at, uh, pickleball.
Well, that'd be good too, we might could combine.
And pickleball, maybe courts, uh, I probably won't be around to see them, but. But, uh, uh, they're needed in this town.
All right, I'll see if we can, I gotta go apply for some stuff next week, so.
I'd love to.
We'll do our best, all right, anybody got any questions?
All right, thank you, sir. Now, uh. Our department, Chief Justin Wittemberg.
Good evening, um, we had fifty-eight calls last month that we responded to, any questions on those? All right, uh, another truck went to Conway this past month, it was supposed to be a simple, let's get the motor and the pump serviced, got it there, on the way, um, one tire came apart. Got it there, it's gonna take a little time to put it on, ended up having broken leak springs that we didn't know about, cause they were right in the middle of the axle, really, really hard to see. Um, so, now we have this quote to get everything fixed for fifty-three nineteen seventy-two.
Truck's parked in the garage right now, I'm not going anywhere. I'll make my approval of that.
One, go to get it fixed for the fifty-three nineteen seventy-two.
I'll second.
Second, but Janie, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carried.
Our, uh, service slash rescue truck, it's a nineteen ninety-nine old energy vault truck, uh, produced a, um. Amperes leaked the other day, and it's one of those E-Class Fords, like a van, so it's under the dash and all that, um, tried to. tried putting a, uh, a patch on it that didn't hold, so I ended up epoxying it. Uh, to fix it, you'd have to replace the whole intake manifold. So we're gonna be looking at getting something else for this vehicle, it's got a hundred and twenty-one thousand miles on it, it was used when we got it. Ninety-nine model, so we're gonna be looking at trying to get that, I've got a patch right now, so we can still use it, there. Just wanna let y'all know.
Alright, any questions? Alright, thank you, sir. Well, something I forgot, which my fault, back with the salaries and stuff. They've upped his pay for being part-time. Was it nine hundred, eight hundred or nine hundred dollars a year? For you? That you can make? Or whatever it was. Well, we had a letter here a while back. Well, I burned it up.
My, my, my pay can only increase when my retirement system allows it. Because I can't work at two paper departments, so this is considered my volunteer job. And they allow the whole state, that increases, I guess, per, uh, cost of living. Yeah, I can only make certain amount a month, though, we're ninety-six hours a month, and I'm kept at that.
I'll look at it, I apologize. Well, we need, I need to know what it is. That'll be.
Is evaluations for next year or?
Yeah, that's for next year. We're gonna do what, most of what we had on. It's up to you, if you don't think you can get it in, we'll wait till the end of the month.
I'm good at my job, I can do that.
Okay. Okay, twelve, uh, public, well, Robert's gone, is there any questions on water and sewer?
Yeah, question, how's the fiber coming along?
I'll be glad they're finished. Now that, I mean, they're, it's going good, I mean, you can't help but hit stuff, you're born, I mean, that's kind of a. We've had some pickups, but I mean, it's, they're supposed to be done within the next probably three or four weeks.
They're hooking up a few houses next week.
Yeah, they're already doing some on this north side.
He was, Dean came in today and he said that section over where you are would be live probably by the end of next week.
So it's. It'll be great. Cause we've never had that, people would come in and hit the hotspots and if you live two blocks away, you couldn't get nothing. So, I'm thankful to them, they're putting it down every alley and dead end street. I mean, there's nobody that won't be able to get that, they're supposed to be a really good company. They're out of Conway, they've got their own trucks, they do it all. Stevens is back and I'm, I mean, it's their good company. Glad, glad they come here. Alright. Got a resolution. Uh, designating and authorizing the mayor and city clerk and deputy city clerk of Lono Water System to execute certain documents in connection with funding administered by the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. Alright, motion, uh, from Sean to bring, uh, eight-one-two-zero-two-five to the floor.
Second.
Second by Dale, all in favor say aye. All, all in favor say aye? Motion carried.
Resolution number eight dash one dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution designating and authorizing the mayor and city clerk or deputy city clerk of the Lono Water System to execute certain documents in connection with funding administered by the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. Whereas the city of Lono, Arkansas owns and operates a water system, the system in order to provide water service to meet the needs of the city and its inhabitants. And whereas the city council has determined that it is in the best interest of the city and its inhabitants to apply for assistance from the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission, the A N R C, in order to make certain improvements to the system. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Lono, Arkansas, section one, that the mayor of the city as a signatory agent or the successor of said agent is hereby authorized and directed to make application for assistance administered by the A N R C and execute when approved by city council a bond purchase agreement and instruments issued or made pursuant thereto on behalf of the city from time to time. Section two, that the city clerk or deputy city clerk as signatory agent or the successor of said agent is hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of the city, all other documents and certificates required.
Motion to doubt by Janie.
Second.
Second by Raymond, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Turn this over to Ginger, we're supposed to have had the easement, uh, for the twelve inch water line, it'll go from down past the, just past the end of the walking trail where those duplexes are on eighty-nine all the way to Pack Road out by the interstate. And it was supposed to have been an easement, we've been working on it a while, I'll let Ginger take over.
Alright, um, so basically Valor Twenty-Nine Holdings LLC is who owns the Mallard Point areas out there. And they're granting to the city of Lono a easement so that we can put in water. And I think what the mayor told me is that we're actually killing one of our old routes that wasn't ideally located through, um, some of the pack lands that are off of Pack Road. And, and basically gonna make it, it's gonna be somewhat better for us also, in, in addition to being able to allow uh, water service out towards the Mallard Point part, so hopefully future development could occur there. And the easement is a little bit different than what I've normally seen, uh, you know, we have, we have a title company, I've seen some easements in my day. Uh, this is a little bit different, um, there are some parts in it that I want to talk to the Valor folks about that I think we can probably work out, um, for instance, uh, it gave us only twelve months to construct the water line down there, which may or may not be possible. Depending on a whole lot of things that may or may not be in and out of our control. Uh, it gave us a ten-foot easement on it, but then a twenty foot, uh, basically double that size to construct it, but only double that size for nine months, which again cuts down the year to, to nine months. Um, you know, hopefully it could be constructed within that time, but we all know what construction is like, especially in a long run, long run like that too. So I, I think those need to be addressed, uh, it has some indemnity provisions in there that I don't think the city can agree to. As in, we were gonna indemnify Valor if something went wrong. I think that's generally a bad idea for a city to do that, because we have qualified immunity for most negligent actions that happen with the city. So I don't know why we would give up our qualified immunity on that. Um, it had some ki- it's kind of confusing languages that weren't properly defined in there. Um, for instance, they would use different acronyms, but never define the acronym, which I can kind of figure out what the acronyms meant. But contracts need to be clear on that, because we have to think about this, of what's somebody a hundred years from now gonna look at this and think this means? Not what can I say what it means today? And so it really just kind of needed to be cleaned up a little bit, I, I don't necessarily agree with, I don't, I, I don't at all agree with the, I don't disagree with the easement, I just need us to correct some of this language in the easement so that we can, we can move forward with it. Um, and I don't think these should be things that are that controversial to Valor, it's just, I think they took maybe an easement form that they had used between private individuals and maybe it would make sense in that type of situation. But when you're dealing with the city, it's, we're never gonna, giving, we're never gonna indemnify anybody.
Well, it's hard to nail down something that you know you've got to do in twelve months, cause you don't know what's gonna happen.
Right, I mean, cause we would still have to, you know, potentially bid outwork. Right, I mean, that, that, it's, obviously we want it done as quickly as possible too.
We're not gonna do it, take five years, you know, but we'd love to do it in a year, but I wouldn't.
I mean, they agreed on a hundred and twenty days, three months, or, yeah.
That contractor did?
Contractor, yeah.
Yeah, but we all know.
We don't ever know what they could run into.
Sure, and contractors, you know, they have a timeframe that they have in good faith, but they're always extendable by weather, acts of God, or this, that and the other, so. Um, I, I feel like we're gonna have an easement, this is just not it yet. Plus there were some typos that they had put in there that, that are gonna be easy to fix, they just, somebody didn't run a stealth check on it.
What do you need from us, you're okay to do it, work on it?
We're just gonna table it till.
Do it, I, yeah.
We get, make sure everything's right.
Um, we could make a motion to allow the mayor to accept the easement. But if there's gonna be any of these kind of different provisions in there that aren't normal for easement, it's in my, in, with cities, in my opinion, I'd rather the council look at it than just the mayor having to make that decision on his own. So as much as I don't want us to have a special meeting on something like this, I think that's probably easiest.
To next month.
Table it to next month. If they can get it worked out, we can have a special meeting.
Well, yeah.
What it is, the people that's doing the sewer on Brown, all down Brown and Fletcher and Palm Street now got the bid for the water line. And like I said, this has been going on for months and we just don't wanna hold them up, we wanna have the right of way, I wanna have it ready to go the minute they're ready, so. I don't, we've, we've been waiting too long, I just wanna get it done.
We, we can have a special if we need to.
If I, if I get it ironed out, that's.
I, I think we can, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking that whoever drafted this did it as if it were two private individuals, but just things work differently when it's with the city. Um, plus they didn't get it to the city until like August sixth, and I, I was. Not in office that day, uh, so it, we've worked on it as quickly as we can, but, um, we need a little bit more time to get that, these things ironed out.
I'm good with you just cleaning up the language and then mayor say, go for it.
Oh, on to the quote from the universe, our uniforms. Y'all had a chance to look at those? This is a five-year agreement.
That's fifty-eight oh thirty-four, that's gonna be for the whole five years.
That's not bad. That's for five years. It's a father moon, for a uniform, but I know it, you know, it, you gotta head to the guy, somebody does it.
Right.
We don't have, we don't have to pay that all the month, dude. Is it, they build your monthly?
From Sean to accept it.
I see.
Second by Wendell, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Old business, uh, solar array. Anybody got any questions on that? Alright, new business, uh, bid received from Natural State Tree Service for, uh, taking over the leaf and limb removal. It's for the very same price as we were paying. Y'all got a list of all their.
Well, when can he start?
Their equipment and. That's.
When will he start?
We can start, we can start a week from the day if we wanted to, just split it. If we can get it done, we can start a week.
There's kind of two ways to do this, we could either, either assign the original contract to.
Half and, try to do it half and half.
You can do what, Ginger?
Um, well, I think they were saying something important about when to start the next contracts, I wanted to hear, hear y'all, what y'all just say.
The water office bills on all that, and so them trying to split something in the middle and then prorate it out to do, it'd be a nightmare.
Yeah, cause the cost is on their bill.
Right, a- and honestly, I think we need to, um, we need to, uh, there's, there's a couple of ways we could do this, we could rebid the entire thing to, to everyone out there, which. Great, um, and then, uh, the other thing would have been to assign the old contract to them, which I think what this company did, they just came in and said we can do it for the same price. I, did we have any other, that is other than them?
No.
Right, so.
No, but we ran it in the state paper, I got multiple requests for the bid packet, but they're the only ones who submitted one.
Okay, gotcha, so if we plan on having maybe a special meeting for the other deal, we could probably get this one in on ordinance, uh, to accept the, accept the contract on it.
So first of month, is that alright with, with y'all, both of y'all? That give everybody time to get everything done, so. Alright.
That we need it.
So.
To approve the contract?
Yeah.
And make that motion?
Motion from Janie to accept the contract.
Well, yeah, a motion to accept the bid, for me to prepare a contract to be approved by ordinance.
Sub motion from Janie, second by Jim Ed, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carried. So we'll look at the first of month, so September first.
Would y'all be opposed to some of them coming and working with us, where we could show them the routes that we're already taking?
That's, that's up to them, I mean, I.
Well, is the Phillips contract still in effect up until this one? I mean, you can hire Hoover you wanna hire.
Cause it's still under your name till the end of the month, so, yeah, y'all, y'all use whoever you want, or do whatever you wanna do.
You just wanted them to ride with you, to show them your route?
I figured it was my, it might help to give them an idea of how we, we, we were picking.
Right, right.
Who would they know of route?
Okay.
Some, some of the streets, they found a pretty tricky.
Are we good, or anybody got any other question? Alright. Now the, uh, I guess all we need is approval to pay bills.
Make a motion.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Second by Raymond, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Um, announcements, uh, planning zoning committee have its August meeting on Au- August eighteenth at six P M. Uh, city of Lono, they close September first and observance of Labor Day. Motion to adjourn.
No, I wanna ask, is that Brett Bunch sitting back there?
Hey, our new school superintendent.
Yes.
Y'all give him a hand.
You came home. Yes, you did, great.
We are looking to open school Wednesday, if you kids have where we're at.
And I don't mean to make him look sad, but we graduated together.
Hey, I, I hate to tell you, I knew him when he was like this, and you too, you know, I'm feeling on myself here. Oh, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
You're a lot better people now.
That's true. Make a motion to a jan.
Motion by Janie.
Aye.
Who did that? Dale, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion cured. They asked to stay.